Okay, good evening. This is a special meeting of the Sterling mining board for 12/29/2016 regarding the special use permit for proposed sand and gravel mine by Christopher J. Construction, 13181 Sanford Road, Markville, lot number 20.00-1-68.1. The first thing we want to cover is the Huga County 239 review and just talk again about what we covered at our work session, just to make sure it's in the minutes. Their concerns for the Town of Victory roads, the 2.2 miles of Sanford Road and Popple Road. And we have in our files a letter from the Town of Victory indicating that Mr. Folito has offered to post a bond to take care of any concerns about damage or injury to the road. The other was a safety concern for Sanford and Popple. And it was indicated to us at that meeting that the county highway department has already removed the brush and will remove more if landowners agree. So that has already increased the site concerns for that area. And then, the last one was Popple Road and again, Mr. Wiggins had a letter that also included a posted bond. And then the traffic study that was done also alluded to some of the safety concerns in that area as well. Our site plan review that we did a year ago and then talked about again at the work session meeting. We had just, we talked about the issues that were a part of the site plan review that were pertinent to the special use permit and those which were not. We did talk about two things. And one was a request for the map that you presented to us with the thousand-foot circles to show where you could do the mining. And the board had considered having maybe a new map with shading. Is that something that's, you still feel is necessary after looking at that map at the work session? Is that something you think is...
June, can I ask you a question?
Okay. At that meeting back last November, when we went through the site plan, I think it might even have been you, Susan, that was looking for another map that might have shown the area that could be mined beyond a thousand feet.
Beyond?
To be in a, the area that he is going to be able to mine, okay? Which is beyond a thousand feet of our land use regulations, okay?
With stuff that's, that he exceeds a thousand feet from the references.
Right.
So it's a...
Right. At that time, I think you indicated you were looking for a map that might show shading so it was more visible.
As to whether it's actually going to be mined.
Right.
Yeah.
So at the work study session, we looked at that map. Here it is, June. Okay. Is this, is this suitable to me? Everybody's...
It doesn't really change anything.
It doesn't?
It clarifies it, makes you understand more clearly than earlier where you can mine.
I mean, if it's something...
I guess then that's...
Like they went back here to this house, they measured out a thousand feet radius, they swum the star. They did that with every house, every radius. So what's outside of those dotted lines, in other words, all this over here is where you can mine.
Okay, yeah, that isn't really clear. So it's, it's...
I think your suggestion was for them to shade or crosshatch or something this area so it was clear where you could mine.
And the contingency is going to have to flag this, all these areas so that if anyone, like the code inspector or whatever, goes on the property, they can... It's very visible.
Have to flag all around this?
Yeah.
Right. So that would be very visible, the area that he is able to mine. But it's just for our references to whether or not you feel that's necessary.
Just crosshatching, that doesn't make the whole larger percentage of the area. Yeah, probably it's more important to have it flagged on the property.
Right. Okay, so we're okay with it? Okay, so, all right. And then this, this second, yeah. The second item that the board talked about, and I think again it was you, Susan, was from the denim, addendum to the stormwater prevention plan for the new phasing. And my only comment on that was that the stormwater plan, have you looked at it recently? Okay. It's very general and it doesn't actually allude to anything specific, or any specific phases or anything. So I'm not sure that we really need to require an addendum for the new phasing because it doesn't really, it doesn't really reflect any specific areas.
For the whole life of mining.
Right.
What about the actual site plan? I mean, the, the thing that describes the whole thing?
Yes, that one.
Do we have, do we have the thing all put together? This is the plan?
Yes.
Now that we can just look at?
He updated those phases.
I have the thing now all put together.
It's the two pages that go in the front. It's not dispersed throughout the entire narrative.
So what, can we put on the table what the plan is?
This is July 15?
July 15, yeah.
Yeah, this was the clarification, July 15, 2015.
So this, so what is the whole plan? Is that it?
I think this first couple pages were always submitted, clarification.
That's just a clarification, but where's the plan itself?
The original...
It's here and this is going to go...
You need something that's got the whole plan all together, not this here, this there.
It's going to be added into this for part of the approval process.
Can I see that whole thing?
Yeah.
This should be the whole thing. Does it include the FWPP in it too?
It does. Well, there's the stormwater... This is right here. Okay.
So now this is it?
Right.
Have the noise reports been updated to be just the one driveway?
They didn't change that. If any, I think you indicated, she asked about the noise reports updated.
I think this one has the...
And that, I think that was a comment that was made in the...
Yeah, but I think the change from the original thing was that you're only doing one driveway.
Right.
In addition to thousand-foot radius change, there's also one driveway instead of the two, right?
Right, right.
I just wondered if any of the reports were redone to reflect that, like the noise?
I think Chris stated...
Everything's going out in one driveway.
Right, Chris stated that the driveway, would it improve the situation for the noise?
For the one driveway, but not the second, if everything's going out the second, that needs to be...
The noise, the noise was approved for both driveways. So if the noise worked here, that's closer to the houses, and you eliminate that driveway, it already got approved for the second driveway, which is farther away, that was the whole purpose of us doing that.
So the, the noise levels were acceptable for the second driveway, but not for the first?
No, they were acceptable for both because that was the original plan. But we, you guys suggested to me to eliminate the one to alleviate some of the noise.
Because it was closer to the hill.
So the, both driveways were already previously approved. That was the original plan for the noise. So by eliminating the driveway...
Wait a second, I thought the reason that they went to one driveway was because there was too much noise on the one driveway and so they said, all right, to get to pass the noise test, we'll eliminate that driveway?
That and, and also the traffic uphill, the bottom hill. The noise, the noise passed using the driveway that is, we're using now the second driveway. Or however you want to say it, the first driveway, second driveway.
And that was per the C part or per the...
That was the original plan. From the beginning, this driveway was going to be here.
Yeah, I remember the noise charts.
Yeah.
And that was...
Per DEC.
DEC for the permit.
Yeah, correct.
Yeah. That's it, okay.
So, but this was ambient noise from the operations within the mine, not the truck traffic?
Takes into consideration everything. But a lot of it had to do with the noise that we were producing in relation to how much noise is being created already, you know, on 104 or whatever roads.
Are we looking at the whole thing? I thought, I thought that the noise study was done to analyze the noise that's going on in the mine and the truck traffic coming in of the access point.
It is, but it uses the...
And if you change the access points and that everything's ever come out of one road with the noise on that road...
Yeah, but this access point was already approved originally.
Yeah, but it didn't have as many trucks on it then. That's what I'm saying, it's if they're now all coming on a...
Yeah, but you could, just because there was two access roads, it didn't mean I had to use this one for trucks to out, you know what I mean? I could use it anytime. So it takes into consideration a truck falling in the driveway right here.
Yeah.
This was already approved originally, so I'm not, I'm not sure where you're going with this.
I'm just trying to understand.
It wasn't originally that half the trucks would go in one or the other.
Yeah.
It was all the trucks could use either one or the other.
Correct.
It was when they did the noise study, so they were both accepted to take all the traffic. It wasn't a fifty, fifty-fifties when they did it.
I'm sorry, I just thought of this as we were... Why don't you go ahead?
Okay. So June, what you just mentioned is the stormwater, which we found out, means an addendum for new phasing or other updated information to match project narrative. Right. Do we consider that done because the phases were brought up in the land, the major plant, rather than the sweep thing? Okay. So, is that done?
If you look at the stormwater prevention plan?
Yeah.
If you look through it?
Yeah.
It doesn't really refer to anything specific?
Okay.
Or location in the mine. It refers to the entire life of the mine? So nothing really needs to be changed? Because what he's going to be mining is part of that entire life of that mine, he just can't do the whole.
Okay. So that's done. I would, you know, says, okay, the updating the other plan that you updated it.
Right.
Okay.
Narrative.
Okay. I don't make questions?
Okay.
The third thing was the traffic study that we discussed at the work session as well. And the conclusions that the traffic study presented, the site triangles leaving the site onto Sanford Road should be cleared to maximize available site distances and meet AASHTO guidelines for this very low-volume road. And that's something that you commented that you would do once you got your permit, correct?
Correct.
As long as you could leave the barrier there, the sound barrier. Right, the trees for the sound barrier?
Yeah.
Okay. And then the site distance at Sanford Road-Pople Road intersection, which was also something we just discussed earlier that Huga County was concerned about. They have already at this time done some clearing at the site, according to Brian. And if more needs to be done, as long as they get permission from landowners, they'll do more. The site distance at State Barn Road, Route 104 intersection, that's really a DOT and a state issue. It's not something that the town can do or Mr. Folito can do, so that's something that... And then the other, excuse me, that was, that was one thing they considered though. There were five intersections.
Right.
Because I had that down.
Okay.
All right.
And then the other thing that was indicated was that centerline striping could help mitigate some of the concerns on Sanford Road. And Mr. Folito is willing to do this with the help of Brian. The Highway Super...
Okay. All right, anything else with that?
Anything else about the noise for the traffic study?
Right. The traffic study?
Yeah, I, there were some things that were not in the report that I thought should be noted.
Okay.
One was that the number of trucks on Route 104, Route 38 will essentially double when you add Folito's trucks to the existing traffic conditions, which is, which is significant. I'm going to put that in the report. Although the numbers in the report show that, and we could look at the numbers. Also, in the report, he says that the time gap, review of the available time gaps in study area shows the average number of gaps in the study area roadways is more than sufficient to come in protective traffic lines. But when you look at the actual time gaps that he computed, forty-five percent of the time, the time gap was less than the eleven-point-five-second requirement on Route 1, on that 104 intersection, which I think is a dangerous situation. And, and that the intersections at Route 30, at Route 4104, I mean, he says the current accident records have no significant patterns. However, he later said in something else that the intersection there, that we consider a kind of dangerous one, was four times the statewide average.
Okay.
There's a certain percentage of that, the truck traffic that's going to be, you know, there anyways, if they're hauling gravel or dirt from another gravel bed, if it's coming to this area. So there's a certain percentage of that that's going to be there anyways. That you're, you know what I'm, you're, you're starting out in Markville instead of coming, say, from Fulton with it or another bed elsewhere. So there is, there's going to be some that's going to leave the area, a certain amount probably, but, so that, I mean, that wasn't considered in their, you're not, I don't know what the percentage would be if it's, you know, twenty-five percent of the trucks are already going to be using Route 104.
What he said in his report of the traffic on 104, about nine percent currently is trucks.
Yeah.
And when I computed that, nine percent of the trucks came out to be about like eighteen or something. And it's going to jump up to thirty-three when you have Folito's trucks there. So you're going from eighteen trucks to thirty-three, which is almost doubling it, the number of trucks on 104. That's the point.
Yeah, but, okay, but what I'm saying is there's...
I'm saying it's a significant increase.
Yeah, if there's eighteen trucks though, if, say, six of those trucks are hauling dirt, hauling gravel, coming through instead of starting out there. So you're, you know, I can see what you're saying, but some of those trucks are already hauling gravel through. Coming through 104 instead of starting out, you know? Like if, say we sell, say Brian by sand from that gravel bed to come here to the town hall. Those trucks are already using, you know, Route 38. They're already on the road, okay? Whether they buy it from over in Red Creek or, I don't know where you get it, but they're already hauling sand in here, hauling dirt in here. So now they're starting out from Markville. That, his figures don't figure those numbers that, you know, you might increase it. You know, if there's nineteen trucks already, there might be twenty or twenty-five. No, there's, there's all kinds of projects. I mean, there's, there's the sand, there's people always building houses, putting driveways in. You know, it's different times of year too, whether they're, they're getting crops or whatever they're doing, the traffic goes up and down. It's hard to, I mean, there's, there's certain days, there's, you know, a hundred trucks now, there's other days, there's five trucks now, probably, it's a hundred.
There's, I could just, I just want to remind the board that the, the traffic study that we're looking at was dated November 1st, 2016. And then there were some comments from the folks about the report, I think raising some of the same concerns that you raised, Susan. And then there was a supplement to that report by email dated November 24, 2016, where Mr. Worseth addresses those, those comments raised by, I guess it was Mr. Cooper's comments. And I think he touches upon some of these issues. I don't know, I just wanted to review that again. No, okay.
And also that intersection, most your accidents are cars coming south on 38, trying to get across 104, or going north on 38. Because that's, looking west up 104, that's a blind hill. And that's what a lot of your accidents are, is people either coming north, trying to cross the intersection, not merge into traffic. If, if trucks are coming north on 38 and they're going to turn and go west on 104, they've got a clear line of sight to the westbound traffic where they're pulling out into. You know, say if they were, if they're turning right from 38 onto 104.
Heading north on 38 or south?
They're heading north, they come off Popple Road and then turn right onto 38 and come up to 104. If they turn right to go toward the swiggle, they've got a clear line of sight to their left, okay? If they're, it's tough, because I've done it a million times, to come across that intersection, but with a truck, you're up higher. You can see up past the pit stop, gas station. You can see better in a truck than you can in a car. And also, with a car coming down, if you're, a lot of, most your accidents, because I was in the fire department for a long time, are people coming south on 38 and they're, you know, you're looking back over your shoulder left, up the hill towards the pit stop.
That's actually hard, yeah.
And cars come over that hill at sixty miles an hour. Is there, you know, because you look and then you look straight to go ahead. And that's where a lot of your accidents happen. I don't, you know, because I, I know the concern, or that's a bad, that's a bad intersection. It ought to have something done with it regardless.
And I think the fact that in that time gap study, when they said like, a hundred twenty-two out of two eighty of them were less than the eleven-point-five seconds required to make the turn. When you're less than that time, it's, it's, to me, it seems like that would be a recipe for an accident. Because either you're going to pull out when you shouldn't and you don't have enough time, or you have pulled out and you get...
But the way the trucks are going to be going, they're going to be turning right, because if they're going to go, they're going to have west on 104, they're going to use that, there's a cutoff there, just past the town barn where they can turn and there's a T, and that gives them a bigger line of sight. Or if they use, I don't know if they'd use the State Barn Road or not, I don't know. They probably wouldn't. That's a, that's a bad intersection too.
Okay. Comprehensive plan. June, let me get stuff back if you'd like to. We talked about, oh, I can't remember which, well, I only didn't bring this. Okay, tell me what numbers, what are we... All right, this is under object, or the goal, sustainable economic development. And it is objective number six. Six, support and promote the local business community and new business development through partnership and service. And that is considered an ongoing, it's short, medium, and long term that we would pay attention to as the town. And number five, establish an environment that encourages the development of local business that's also ongoing.
So what are we doing now?
Looking at the comprehensive plan.
Just against this settlement?
As a statement of compliance.
As to whether this is compliant with the...
Right. And again, the comprehensive plan is very open to interpretation and it's a guideline for towns to use. It's not a law per se. And what was it on here? Well, we talked about... Purpose of the mixed use hamlet. All right, and this is areas of future growth and development, mixed use hamlet transitional areas. The purpose of the mixed use hamlet transitional area is to encourage and provide for a mix of appropriately scaled commercial, new residential, and very low-intensity industrial land uses in the town of Sterling, which accentuates the existing development patterns by concentrating new development around the town's four hamlets. And that you will find in the map here. North Victory is one at the intersection of 38 and State 104.
What, what's your point?
Well... What's your point? As far as...
Is it compliant? Is this project compliant with that?
You speak...
Yes, it's my opinion that it is. And it's by opinion, yes, it is a opinion, because that's one of the areas that the mixed use hamlet, that the areas between Markville was one north, Sterling was another one, there's about five. And they're right there. Uh, and each one, there's the ones where we wanted to, as a town in a planning board, discover the comprehensive plan, and those are the areas we wanted to seek growth.
Instead of, on, on the town roads?
Yes, instead of, yes.
To make more stats to concentrate in these little sites, and do a...
Yeah, right.
Instead of spreading a lot on the...
Right.
In fact, we say here, going forward, the town of Sterling wishes to encourage moderate density residential development that is oriented towards clusterland adjacent to the town hamlets.
Yes.
So, the thought was going ahead, residential development could be focused in those areas, which are already a little bit more dense, and they have, you know, that big groups or whatever.
And it is, it's on this future land use concept map, it's right here. It's a concept map, and it just shows circle the areas where we would want to encourage growth, right, rather than having, you know...
But that, to me, uh, says that something like this mining project would not be appropriate there. Because if we wanna encourage residential growth there, why would someone wanna build there and have all the trucks go by?
Well, I mean, it's been a mine for 50 years.
Right.
So, a lot of the houses, people moved in after knowing it was a mine, there was a mine there.
Then it's been a commercial... But it wasn't really mined very much, and it was very...
But the potential was there.
Right.
The potential was always there.
But I think, I know, I personally, I drove down that street, and it's really pretty, Sanford Road.
Mm-hmm.
And I thought to myself, um, gee, I wouldn't mind living here, this is really pretty, like, so... And I thought, but if they put the mine in, I would not wanna live here. So, to me, that says, and I was, you know, just being objective with that. I thought, people come to Sterling because they like the rural, uh, environment, they want the rural area. And, um, that's the kind of people that are gonna be developing. They're not gonna develop it if the mine is there. I, that's my personal opinion, that. It goes against the comprehensive plan for this area.
Can I ask you a question then? Up the road a little ways is, um, I don't know, it's not a used car lot, it's a...
It's a pair of... On Sanford Road?
Yeah, dozens of cars all around here.
That is, I would not...
Okay?
Yeah.
Do you think that is objectionable as much as the mine?
Pretty much.
I don't think that mine, you're not gonna be able to see the mine anymore now than what you can with the trees and stuff there, there's gonna be a driveway though.
No, I don't think it's seen the mine. I think it's the trucks going in and out, and the noise, and the, and the noise of the operations. I personally, if you're living, if they're gonna build a house there, would you build a house there? You know?
For how much it paid a lot, yeah.
I bought a, I mean, years ago, my father bought a house next to one, and he bought the property, so there wasn't one there. I mean, that, that land was for sale, if you didn't want a gravel bed there, there was that option. I mean, it's, it's the right to farm. I mean, I, I've lived here 47 years. My family's lived here forever, you know, a lot of our families have lived here forever. There's nobody that wants to maintain the integrity of this town and what this town's been. I mean, Mr. Green grew up down the road from there. I'm sure if he thought in any way it was gonna ruin the street he grew up on, or the community he grew up on, he would be opposed to it. I mean, his family, he was raised there. We've lived here, I've lived here 47 years in the town of Sterling. You know, Rod's lived here, and he's older than me. But his father, you know, we're, we're not gonna let something come into this town that's gonna change. Everybody comes to this town because they like what it is. We're the people that have been here for generations, my grandfather, my father, me, that have made this town presentable, or, you know, I feel honored that people wanna come here. But I don't, I don't feel this is gonna change it. There's been gravel beds in this town, there's been farms in this town, there's been different businesses in this town that have...
I have a thing.
You know, there's, there's a certain amount of people in this town that are, that are never gonna leave Markville, that might get a job working for Mr. Folito. That, that's gonna provide them a job, a livelihood, so they can raise their families and live here for the rest of their life. That's, you know, I see where you're coming from, but I, you know, as living here my whole life, I don't think this is gonna affect...
I'm sorry, but...
We got, we, there's no public comment tonight.
Well, then he should be talking to Rod Green.
He's, he asked him a question.
I, no, I, I was mentioning to her, that, you know, Rod Green lives down the street from there his whole life.
Sorona!
Now, this is, this is one point that has been brought up more, you know, often than not. And it is one thing that we as a board have considered, and are considering, with Susan, with Susan's point, are considering as part of our decision. It's been brought up, and we've listened to the public. And we have used it as part of our decision making, so...
Yeah, and I was just saying, in reference to the zoning, to the comprehensive plan thing about, um, development, the recommendations for development for that area, I just feel that if we are, you know, as a planning board, if we're looking to encourage residential development in that area, that this is not a good way to do it. So, I don't think it's, um, you know, if you're looking at, is this consistent with the comprehensive plan? I think in that aspect, it isn't.
Okay. Okay, and then the, um, the final thing that we need to do is accept the seeker from the DEC, who was lead agency, um, as a negative declaration.
Well, what does that mean? We just acknowledge that they did it?
That's correct.
And that we have, you knew it, and we have it, basically. I mean, we're not taking any action, just indicating that we have received it. You need a motion or something?
Kevin, do you need a motion, except for...
Uh, well, it'll be part of your resolution there. I think you, the board, uh, received the DEC negative declaration, and, uh, and then it's up to the board to either adopt it, you know, adopt the resolution with it, or, you know, for whatever reason, we don't.
So, at this time, we're going to read the entire resolution. And we're gonna take, we're gonna take turns, right? We took us a few pages or something. Would you, does it, would you love? I would love that. Do you like to start? I suppose. Start right from the top. Resolution number 2016 dash whatever that goes in there, right? Give, uh, Town of Sterling Planning Board Resolution. Christopher J. Construction LLC, application for special use permit to operate a sand and gravel mine at 13181 Sanford Road, Markville, New York, tax ID number 20.00-1, dash 68.1. Now, there's something to fill in afterwards. So-and-so has moved and, whatever, seconded the following resolution that needs to be filled in. After, whereas, Christopher J. Folito of Christopher J. Construction LLC, current CJC, applied to the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, the DEC, on June 23rd, 2014, for a mined land reclamation permit to operate a proposed service sand and gravel mine at 13181 Sanford Road, Markville, New York, tax, same as I said before, in current Markville Mine. And whereas, in July 2014, the DEC requested lead agency status with respect... Now, I have a little, should two go in there? Status with respect to its review?
With respect to, correct.
Okay. To its review of the Markville Mine under the New York State Environmental Quality Review. And, six, in the NYCRR, Part 617, current C... And, whereas, CJC submitted an application to the Town of Sterling Planning Board on January 9th, 2015, for a special use permit in accordance with LUR Land Use Regulations, Article 10-4C, to operate the proposed mine at its property located at 13181 Sanford Road, Markville, New York, tax ID, same as above. And whereas, the Town of Sterling Land Use Regulations, LUR, specifically allow for mining and extraction of resources. Should that be in Article or not? Is it okay?
No, that's fine, at Article 10.5.
At, that's fine?
Yes, 10-5J.
Okay. Uh, 10-5J. And whereas, on February 20th, 2015, CJC completed and submitted Part 1 of the Full Environmental Assessment Form, EAF, to the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, the DEC, for consideration, and the DEC declared itself to be the lead agencies for the mining project. And as such, was responsible for completion of Part 2 and 3 of the Environmental Assessment Form. Whereas, Christopher Folito of CJC appeared before the planning board on April 6th, 2015, for a preliminary review regarding his special use permit application, at which time the planning board advised Mr. Folito, inter alia?
Yeah, yeah.
And, oh, okay. That it must refer him to the Town of Sterling Zoning Board of Appeals for an area variance with respect to Land Use Regulation, Article 10-5J2D, which requires...
Is it very necessary that we just read all of this? I mean, can we not read it to ourselves, and...
I've already read it a couple times. But, but do we have to go to...
What's the purpose of reading it out loud and taking...
Public.
So, it's public, and then raise the issues? I spoke, I don't know.
But the law should respond, so why...
Well, we all can, all right, who decided?
There's gonna be a motion, so we're gonna read through the entire resolution.
So that we're all in understanding. It requires that, okay. Access road at all points, including but not limited to the main entrance and exit, shall be at least 1,000 feet from any existing residence or public building. Now, I had a question about that, public building. Because, like, somebody's baron is not a public building. Is there any existing residence or structure, I think the law is saying?
Well, I think that's...
Is it okay? I mean, I'm just questioning...
Yeah, I think that's the direct quotation from 10.5J2D.
Okay.
Yeah, and from any existing residence or public building, I'm cool.
Okay.
That's, that's the way our law's written, so...
All right, okay. Whereas...
How is the area variance stated though? Did it say from residence or structure, or did it say from residence or...
I know it had to be 1,000 feet away from the residence or structure. It's, I think there's a different little verbiage that's a little different later on in here, but I'm not sure. It was just a question, so maybe...
She can check the variance.
Oh, I have C page 4, so apparently on page 4. Surrounding structures, 1,000 feet away from any surrounding structures. So, you know, then I have C page 2, so, just...
Well, you did read this.
Oh, 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 yes, twice I've read this, true, anyway. Okay, so that was just...
So, that should be changed to structure, then?
I don't know.
No, just leave it the way that, that's the way, it's direct quotation, the way the law...
All right, done. Whereas, by letter dated April 8th, 2015, the planning board advised the ZBA that CJC was being referred to it for the aforementioned area variance. And whereas, the ZBA duly advised... Oh, advertised, thank you. The April 27th, 2015, public hearing for CJC's area variance application and provided notice by certified mail to adjacent property owners. And whereas, the ZBA held the public hearing on CJ's, CJ's area variance application as scheduled on April 27th, 2015, at which time it received written opposition to the project, as well as a letter from CJC's attorney, John Clusen, ESQ, in support. During the public hearing, the public asked Christopher Folito questions about the project. After consideration of the application, and all written and verbal comments in support and in opposition to the project, the ZBA unanimously approved CJC's area variance application. The ZBA's resolution approving the area variance was filed with the Town Hall on May 4th, 2015, and again on May 5th, 2015.
Can I ask a question there?
Yes.
Shouldn't, sorry, wouldn't it be advisable to spell out what the variance was for? And I realize it says the area variance, but what is it the ZBA actually approved? Is that in the minutes?
It's not part of the...
For records purposes?
Yeah, yeah.
Should it maybe be recited here?
Uh, I, I think it's, yeah, it's the way it is, as far as I'm concerned.
Okay, yes.
Although, I mean, if we're writing the resolution, and it seems like it's something that gets...
But the "whereas" is just reciting what's happened today, and that reflects the fact that the resolution's filed, so if anybody wants to look at it, they can, they can go look at it. May 4th and May 5th, I think it was filed.
Whereas, on May 4th, 2015, the DEC issued a notice of complete application and a negative declaration with respect to CJC's mining application. As indicated in the DEC's negative declaration, the DEC as lead agency determined that the proposed action will not have a significant effect on the environment, and that a draft environmental impact statement will not be required. The DEC also declared the proposed mine to be a type 1 action. In reaching its conclusion regarding no significant effect on the environment, the DEC considered all potential impacts from the project, including soil, water, traffic, noise, dust, air, cultural and visual resources, and fish and wildlife. And whereas, by letter dated May 6th, 2015, in accordance with General Municipal Law 239M, Land Use Regulation, Article 10-4E, the Town of Sterling Planning Board referred CJC's special use permit application for the proposed mine to the Keegah County Department of Planning and Economic Development for review by the Keegah County GML 239-1.
That's L, I can learn.
Oh, L, okay.
Yeah.
Um, Review Committee, the 239 Committee. As part of the referral, the planning board provided the 239 Committee with the following documents. CJC Special Use Permit Application, April 6th, 2015, Planning Board Minutes. CJC Area Variance Application to ZBA with Resolution and Vicinity Map, April 27th, 2015, ZBA Minutes. Mined Land Use Plan from April 2015. Stormwater Control Plan from June 2014. May 4th, 2015, DEC Notice of Complete Application and Negative Declaration and Correspondence Between DEC and Project Geologist, Thomas Giles. And whereas, the 239 Committee issued its final determination regarding CJC's pending special use permit on May 29th, 2015. As stated therein, the 239 Committee recommended disapproval of the project due to the following potential interminable impacts. Potential to adversity, adversely impact the road infrastructure of the Town of Victory, traffic safety concerns with respect to site distances and site radiate, and potential deterioration of County Route 112. And whereas, after a public hearing on June 22nd, 2015, the ZBA denied CJC's application for an area variance under Land Use Regulation, Article 10-5J. Article 10-5J2C. And whereas by letter dated June 29th, 2015, Michael Wiggins Supervisor, Town of Victory, advised the Town of Sterling Planning Board that the posting of a $50,000 maintenance bond by CJC will ensure adequate protection of the portion of Sanford Road located in the Town of Victory. And whereas by letter dated July 1st, 2015, George Rethley, Highway Superintendent, Keegah County Highway Department, advised the Town, inter alia, of the following. The Keegah County Highway Department will trim trees and brush along Popple Road, south of Sanford Road, to attempt to increase the site distance at the intersection. The Keegah County Highway Department already sent a Form TE-9A to the Town of Sterling and the Town of Victory to start the process of lowering the speed limit through on Popple Road. The concern about potential deterioration of Popple Road/County Route 112 would be minimized as CJC provided a bond in the amount of $200,000 to cover the cost of road repairs on Popple Road/County Route 112. And whereas on July 15th, 2015, CJC submitted a revised site plan and a mine land use plan clarification. Wherein it adjusted its proposal so that the life of mine portion of the site was at least 1,000 feet away from any surrounding structures and in compliance with the Land Use Regulations, Article 10-5J2C. In addition, CJC submitted a revised mining plan map dated July 15th, 2015, to the Planning Board, eliminating one of the two access roads/driveways into the project site which was closest to the adjacent residences. And whereas on August 17th, 2015, in light of the change made by CJC from a two driveway to a one driveway site, the ZBA unanimously voted to rehear CJC's area variance under Land Use Regulation, Article 10-5J2D. And...
Okay, and whereas on September 8th, 2015, John M. Plancy of the DEC sent CJC an approved permit, authorizing the operation of the Markville Mine through September 7th, 2020. Also on September 8th, 2015, the DEC issued a detailed response to public comments on the Markville Mine to all interested parties. As indicated therein, the DEC received comments regarding the proposed mine from one individual and four government agencies, governmental agencies. The Town of Sterling, Keegah County Soil Water Conservation District, New York State Department of Transportation, and the County Highway Department. And whereas on September 11th, 2015, the ZBA published notice of the September 24th, 2015 rehearing of CJC's area variance with respect to Land Use Regulations, Article 10-5J2D, and nailed same to the surrounding property owners. And whereas the ZBA held the rehearing of CJC's area variance under LUR Article 10-5J2D on September 24th, 2015, the ZBA considered, inter alia, emails received from town residents in opposition to the project. Mr. Felito explained that the reason for the change from two driveways to one driveway was to reduce potential noise levels. The ZBA engaged in a thorough and detailed discussion of the impact of the change from two driveways to one driveway. It said to be one driveway, strangely.
Yep.
And the public was permitted to provide comments regarding the change. Following closure of the public hearing, the ZBA engaged in a lengthy discussion about the variance and considered the five factor analysis required for area variations by Town Law 267-D3 and LUR Article 4-10C2. After duly considering the comments from the public, including the emails and written materials submitted, a unanimous vote was taken by the ZBA granting the amended, modified area variance to allow trucks to enter and exit through a single road, single access road/driveway as located on the July 15th, 2015 site plan. And whereas on September 28th, 2015, the ZBA filed with the Town Clerk Resolution 2015-09, following the rehearing of CJC's area variance under LUR Article 10-5J2D, which provides, inter alia, that the board has relied on verbal representations made by the applicant during the course of these proceedings as noted in the applicable board minutes, that the validity of these statements are expressly made a condition of this approval, and that the amended and modified variance may be granted upon the facts presented and the determinations made. Resolution 2015-09 also specifically references and incorporates the original April 27th, 2015 area variance and the factual findings and determinations made by the ZBA in granting same. Whereas, the Planning Board held a public hearing on CJC's site plan application on November 2nd, 2015. The Town advertised the public hearing and sent notice the same to adjacent property owners as required by law. At the public hearing, the Planning Board made the following findings regarding the items provided by CJC in its application for site plan approval as required by LUR Article 11-2B, is that L, one?
One.
P1. Items A, B, C, and D, four maps dated July 28th, 2015, titled Mining Plan Map, Stormwater Control Plan, Inner Condition, Reclamation Plan Map, and Final Condition Map were provided by CJC. The Planning Board found the information provided by CJC and its geologists, North Arrow Scale Date Location of Water Courses, all to be acceptable on all four maps. The Planning Board asked that the phasing that the Town is allowing, 1A, 1B, 2, and a small section of 3 and 4, needs to be emphasized on the maps by outlining or shading, this would seem a little... Stormwater, item E, Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan, SWPPT. Narrative needs addendum of new phasing and other updated information to match project narrative. Item F, maps ethically show surface drainage directions, contours, and elevations. I've got a lot of that, so you're right.
Item G, no proposed buildings, therefore not applicable. Item H, the ingress egress is located on the map, it's access road, in accordance with Planning Board and ZBA requirements. Lack of mind, area covered, and busy, each big time. Item I, J, K, L, N, N, and O, not applicable to project design. There is no paintwork stored on site, portmoneau to be used in lieu of onsite septic and water system, no electric service utilized at site. A portmoneau generator is to be used for pumping water from existing well as needed for dust abatement. Item P, signage for direction, traffic speed, or other is at the discretion and authority of NYF DOT. Is that signage stuffed up to be on the actual roads or within the mine roads? What are we talking about?
I understood it to be within mine.
Within the mine?
Exactly, you're all understand?
Well, if it was New York State DOT, it would have to be on the road, because it wouldn't have any jurisdiction in the mine.
That's what I'm, that's what I was looking at. And is there gonna be any signage in the mine? I thought somewhere else they were stating that he was gonna put signage as a left...
Yes, under the condition.
That's under condition to be further in, yeah.
Item Q, maps provide information of buffer areas such as wooded area along roadway, tree plantation, woods, and revegetated grasses. Items R and S, not applicable to this project. Items T, reclamation map and sections included in narrative of reclamation method, schedule, and revegetation found to be acceptable. Item U, item intended for building construction, therefore not applicable, but the DEC premise for Phase 1A is for five years, which can be renewed, if not depleted or reclaimed if phase is finished. Item V, secret information has been supplied with application, negative declaration by DEC as lead agency, DEC permit issued, and DEC comment responses. Items W and X, the Planning Board has copies of required state, county, and local permits, recommendations, and approvals necessary for project in project file. DEC mine permit due to county, county, 239 report, and firm ZBA variances. Now, who is the holder of the project file?
The Town.
Oh, Project File, DEC mine permit.
No, it stays in the Coates office, but the Town Clerk has access to it.
Item Y, the members agree that a traffic study needs to be performed.
Can I stop you there? I have a little question on that. Does, do we have to go in anywhere in any of these? I know later it talks about the, who we had doing.
Mm-hmm.
Here, do we have to say that we sent bids out to four companies, or three, or how many, and that we decided and, frightening any?
No.
Does it have to be anywhere?
No, because nobody ever objected to that.
Okay.
Nobody ever filed any of the times passed to do that, so.
Okay, so that, we'll have to go on and say, okay, okay.
At the public hearing, the Planning Board made the following findings and determinations regarding CJC's site plan application, with respect to the considerations set forth in LUR Article 11-2C. Items 1, 3, 4, 6, 8, and 10, these items are intended for the development of buildings or housing development, utilized in parking, new permanent roads, utilities, and other improvements, and referenced in the project, which does not include any of these elements. Item 2, these items are to be addressed by the CM traffic study.
Oh, I just stopped, can I stop you? There, for a minute, these items are to be addressed by this, and you put in their CM traffic study. I think they should be written out, frightening, because they haven't showed up before.
Okay, just, yeah, these items were just by the, just say traffic study.
Okay, okay.
Just keep it as CM.
Okay.
The SWPPT is designed, item 5, the SWPPT is designed to eliminate runoff from object site during establishment of the protective berm and during the commercial operation of the mine. As such, if its stormwater retention has been satisfactorily addressed. Item 7, existing trees as well as several hundred planted trees along the roadway shall provide adequate visual screening of operation from the neighbors. The natural vegetation construction of a seven-foot earth berm around the entire perimeter of the lack of mine should also create a visual barrier as well as reduce noise heard by neighboring properties. Now, what is the vegetation that was gonna be taken out for visibility? Is that part of the visual screening, trees, or is that...
It's along the driveway, some of the trees that are for visual screen, but not many, I mean, it's a, a short track.
It's not gonna affect the buffering, what's taken out for the...
Right along the road, yeah, you're gonna have to take that out for street distance.
Items 11 and 12, the Planning Board is yet to decide on the adoption of the lead agency secret findings and/or whether further investigation of environmental impacts and neighborhood safety and welfare is warranted. I'm not sure what that means there, yet to decide, that was what we said at the meeting?
Correct.
And so what happened after that?
I, well, I think the board, in this resolution, I, I think the resolution's gonna include an adoption of the secret findings tonight, if it's passed. And then as far as whether further investigation of environmental impacts and neighborhood safety and welfare is warranted, I guess, I don't know, the, the board determine that, whether that's needed?
Well, we just accepted the secret finding, right? And all the, you know, how much they followed up on the public concerns and that's, yeah, that's in the, because we talked about it earlier, so. So, do you think that needs to be...
This is just reflects what finding guys made at that, that public hearing, so. I think, you know, over the past two years, and I think it's, it'll be addressed later on in the resolution.
The Planning Board needs to leave the public hearing open till last day. They need to submit additional information on the project, including a traffic study as recommended by the New York State DOT. And Vice Director Virginia Frashera, Robin Allender, Alvin Hammond, Jeffrey Cooperus, Tia Cooperusdale, Richie, and Maureen Richie collectively referred to hearing as petitioners, commissioned Article 78 proceeding by filing a verified petition on October 28th, 2015, with the New York State Supreme Court, County Index Number 2015-0968, against the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, the Zoning Board of Appeals of the Town of Sterling, the Planning Board of the Town of Sterling, Sterling, Christopher J. Construction LLC, and Christopher Felito, and serving the copy of said petition on the Town of Sterling Honor of that November 10th, 2015.
That's fine, you know, it's, it's, it's out of court.
Whereas, as December 7th, 2015 meeting, the Planning Board advised that its review of CJC's special use permit would be stayed until the Article 78 proceeding pending resolve. And whereas on May 16th, 2016, Honorable Mark H. Sandwick, Acting Justice of the New York State Supreme Court of the County, issued an order denying the Article 78 in its entirety and dismissing the Article 78 in its entirety. The order was entered by the Keegah County Court on May 17th, 2016. And whereas on November 1st, 2016, at the expense of the Planning Board and the expense of CJC, Kenneth Warsted, PEPTOE of Great Union Engineering, LFP, RNCN, completed a traffic evaluation, traffic study for the proposed mine where it made, inter alia, the final five conclusions. Review developed, the review of the available time gaps on the study area roadway shows that the average number of gaps in the study area roadway is more than sufficient to accommodate the project volumes, too, from the site. Now, here we're stating where it made the final conclusions. Shouldn't we put in what our conclusions are from that report?
This, the way that it's written is, it's just quoting the language from the report. This is where it, it made the call, goes to it being CM.
The current, two, the current accident records and findings of the New York State DOT, too, this is like a history of one...
Yes.
Current accident records and findings of the New York State DOT investigation found no significant patterns, most accidents were off single vehicles and occurred during daylight conditions with dry pavement. Three, based on the site distance evaluation, the following is recommended. A, the site triangles leading the site onto Sanford Road should be cleared to maximize available site distances and the AASHTO guidelines that is very low volume value. You want to take?
Sure. B, the site distance at Sanford-Pople Road intersection should be improved. C, site distance at State Barn Road, Route 104 intersection should be improved if trucks intend to use this intersection. Four, conflicts between opposing vehicles on Sanford Road has not resulted in any reported accidents. The use of Sanford Road to the south is not expected to result in significant conflicts between opposing vehicles. However, if the Town feels necessary, centerline striping will mitigate this concern. Number five, there are no active weight restrictions on, says Paul, but should be Popple Road and Combs Road.
Popple, you need to pee in there.
Yeah. And Combs Road, south of the site, therefore use of these roads in victory will depend on the distinction of quarry materials, destination of quarry materials, I'm sorry. In either case, the increase in volumes is expected to be relatively low. And whereas on November 24th, 2016, Kenneth Warsted, PEPTOE of Great Union responded by email to the Planning Board regarding comments received from the public regarding his traffic study. And whereas the Planning Board reopened the public hearing for CJC's special use permit and site plan application on December 5th, 2016, notice of which was duly published in accordance with the law. The public was provided an opportunity to make comments regarding the project, and the public was heard by the Planning Board. Following the public comment, the Planning Board closed the public hearing. And whereas the Planning Board has fully considered all the application materials, drawings, and submissions associated with the application... associated with the application and the applicant's proposed use, as well as all public comments and all written communications received by the town residents regarding the proposed project and now therefore be it resolved that the Town of Sterling Planning Board hereby recognizes the DEC's lead agency status, so that covers that, for purposes of review under the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, Seeker, and does hereby adopt December, or the DEC's May 4th, 2015 negative declaration with respect to C J C's application, as well as its determination that the proposed action is a type I action and will not have a significant effect on the environment and that a draft environmental impact statement will not be required. And be it further resolved that the Town of Sterling Planning Board has determined the site plan subjected, submitted by C J C satisfies the requirements of L U R Article 11, Site Plan Review and Approval, and therefore the C J C's proposed site plan for the Martville Mine at 13181 Sanford Road, Martville, New York, tax ID Number 20-1-68.1 is approved. And be it further resolved that the Town of Sterling Planning Board has reviewed the Town of Sterling and Village of Fairhaven Comprehensive Plan and has determined that the proposed project and special use permit are compliance with all aspects of the comprehensive plan.
Can I ask something here now? If we don't agree with that, do we want to change this, or is it, we're going to just?
Somebody's going to move this, make a motion to pass this resolution and it'll be able, readable.
And so if you don't agree with anything that's in here, you vote against it?
You can vote against it, or you can propose a change to it.
But we're not going to change anything that's in here today?
Yeah, we can, I mean, it's up for discussion. If you have proposed to change to this resolution, you can, you can raise it now, or when the motion's made?
Okay, because I think that it is not in compliance with the comprehensive plan in all aspects of the comprehensive plan, and I don't know whether we want to.
There's.
You know, if you put it in the resolution, it's kind of like, how did you vote it?
There'll be a resolution, you either vote to approve or disapprove of it, so if you don't think it is, then I guess you probably, you disapprove. The motion is going to be passed this resolution, it's ready.
Be it further resolved pursuant to L U R Article 10, Special Use Permits, is that, or five?
Article 10.
Ten, yeah, the planning board shall grant an application for a special use permit if it meets the following general considerations and in respect thereto, the Town of Sterling Planning Board makes the following findings and determinations. L U R.
Excuse me, I interrupt you here. Does that, you have findings under, you know, you go on, there's a, they're all, you know, finding, you have land use whatever, and then a finding. Does that have to have, I got confused reading this, but does a finding go before that, or is this the finding having to do with the art, the one above? Do you see what I mean?
Because the, the language is quoted, where it says, for instance, L U R Article 10-4A1. That's just the quoted language out of our, out of our Article 10, land use right.
The finding is on that.
Okay, so a finding is.
And then under that, under the heading, you see finding, and that finding relates to that particular.
To the one above.
10-4A1, and then you'll see 10-4A2 and so forth.
Okay, then the finding that went to that, okay, I was a little confused, so, okay, oh, okay, sorry.
I can revise that to.
Oh, that's.
To set it up so it's clear.
Yeah, I just, that's.
We, you have five days to file, if a resolution is passed, you have five days to file it, so if you want to make a change, I could set that off somehow.
No, because that made it clear, but I kept thinking, I have the input set up, and it was a little, so, okay, that's all my, I'm sorry. So, okay, so start with that.
All right, L U R Article 10-4A1, in the best interest of the town, the convenience of the community, the public welfare, and the substantial improvement to property in the immediate vicinity. The Town of Sterling, L U R, allows mining in agricultural residential.
Scott, just to interrupt, no, you're going into finding, because we're.
Oh, finding, yep, okay, I'm sorry.
Yep.
Okay, the Town of Sterling, L U R, allows mining in the agricultural residential zoning district of the town through the issuance of a special use permit. The subject property is located in the A R District and has been historically recognized as a gravel mine for over 50 years. Future use of this property is a commercial mine that extracts more than 1,000 cubic yards of material would be regulated with conditions imposed by the DEC and the Town of Sterling that would protect the general public welfare from any potential harm. These conditions would support a substantial, responsible, environmentally sound method of material extraction that would remain, would maintain the standard of living in the town. Gravel needs of the area would be served by this mine and are essential for future development and infrastructure improvement of Sterling and the surrounding communities. Due to the close proximity of the mine, building materials would be purchased at lower cost by the town, which also benefits the taxpaying residents of Sterling. Mining companies would provide jobs, tax revenue, and promote business ventures in the local community where they are located. The activities of the proposed mine are similar in nature to the agricultural activities that are prevalent throughout the community. The exhaustive review of environmental concerns by the DEC provides a strong enforcement basis for oversight by both town and state officials that will ensure compliance of guidelines established and in turn ensure the safety of the public.
Could you read that sentence again, please?
The exhaustive review of environmental concerns by the DEC provides a strong enforcement basis for oversight by both town and state officials that will ensure compliance of guidelines established and in turn ensure the safety of the public. You good?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, you're fine.
It's a long sentence.
I know, I'm sorry.
Mine lands remain valuable during and after completion because of the conservation techniques employed during the operational phase of the mine, which promotes further uses such as parks, wildlife habitat, agricultural fields, forestry development, residential subdivisions and/or businesses, all of which improve the character and quality of the community. As mining is permitted in this location, it is important to emphasize this project has a very short duration permit of five years. The project is not only previously existed zone area that permits mining, but includes a parcel that was historically a mine. This project therefore is convenient to the Town of Sterling community as the mining operation would not be conducted on a fresh parcel untouched by mining, but on a parcel in a permitted area that has already experienced mining operations.
I understand, you're saying that this area that commits mining, was there a mining permit before, did it? I thought there wasn't, I thought it was just done.
It means that it's permitted in the town, in the agricultural district.
Permitted is allowed, not, is it permitted?
It's right, is allowed, yeah, that's correct.
So, there had been no permit given to this property previously, because the amount of material taken out of there was below a necessary level.
But it was allowed?
Yes.
Would you like to start again, Sue?
Literally, sir.
If you want to, if that word's confusing, remove permitted, I guess. Just say conducted on a fresh parcel untouched by mining, but on a parcel in an area that has already experienced mining operations.
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
Like, this is a new, but I, I think you're right here, you start here, okay.
So, we're taking out in a permitted area?
Just take out permitted, the word permitted.
Okay, in, in area.
Is it added, or is it not? Okay, so in conjunction with the allowable operation under zoning laws, DEC has identified this project as one being commonly known, including to the Town of Sterling, as being once again a possible gravel mine in the future. See Page 9 of DEC Response to Public Comments dated September 8th, 2015, with reference to March 12th, 2015, letter from Town of Sterling Highway Superintendent to the DEC.
Please, I don't understand that sentence. You conduct them being a lot of operation under zoning laws, the DEC has identified the project as one being commonly known, including to the Town of Sterling, as being once again a possible gravel mine in the future, what does that mean?
That's, the DEC identified that as an area that could be a possible gravel mine in the future.
Oh, before this ever came, before then, they, that was in your thing that, oh, okay.
Okay. In conjunction with the possibility of mining operations resuming in the future, DEC identified during its investigation that Sanford Road was rebuilt in 2014, with the understanding of a possible gravel mine in the near future. See Page 9 of DEC Response to Public Comments dated September 8th, 2015, March 12th, 2015, letter from Mr. Soper, Town Highway Superintendent, to DEC. The DEC has very strict guidelines that ensures that, among other things, that the public welfare, along with the environment, are protected. DEC also has a very strong enforcement unit that will verify compliance with DEC regulations and laws and also assist on the strict following of these regulations and laws. Violations of regulations and laws carry both civil and criminal penalties and could result in Mr. Folito risking the forfeiture of his mine reclamation bond. In addition, Mr. Folito is identifying, right?
Yeah, identifying.
That's, this is, this project for DEC, known as holding harmless, should there be any civil and/or criminal violations of regulations and laws pertaining to the project. The DEC has concluded, approved its findings, that the findings of this project are accurate and adequately assessed and address any potential environmental impacts. See Page 14 of DEC Response to Public Comments dated September 8th, 2015. More important, the DEC determined that the project will not have significant effect on the environment. See Page 15 of the DEC Response to Public Comments dated September 8th, 2015. The DEC determined that there were no impacts that could not be mitigated by the plan in the mining permit conditions, perence, Page 15 of DEC Response to Public Comments dated September 8th, 2015. With the assistance of the DEC, the Town of Sterling would also be able to assure and verify that the public welfare is not at harm or jeopardy. The planning board has considered the comments and written materials, including but not limited to the Professor Diane Height study provided by residents expressing their concerns about the potential negative impact of the mine on surrounding values. The Professor Height study looked at the effects of a 250-acre gravel mine on sale prices in the 1990s in Delaware County. Gravel mine on sale prices, is that right? Okay, Delaware County, Ohio. This project's mining permit is much smaller operation as it consists only of 5.5 acres. As such, the proposed mine is very different in size, scope, and geography from the mine studied by Professor Height. Furthermore, the property values analyzed by Professor Height were located in a different part of the country approximately 20 years ago. Adequate evidence has not been presented to the planning board that a mine of this or similar size, scope, and/or duration in this location in the current housing market would adversely affect the value of the surrounding properties.
I mean, I don't know what kind of evidence we would need to say that it would adversely affect the value, but it just seems intuitively obvious that it would affect the values of the surrounding properties. I can't see that we would say it's not going to affect the values of surrounding properties, it obviously is.
Well, the, the planning board has to grant a permit only if it finds adequate evidence of, of what we're talking about here, so you have to, I guess, ask yourself if adequate evidence has been presented to the planning board in the form of a study or something that would show that. We can't just guess at it or surmise that it might happen or think that it would.
I thought it was the reverse, that evidence had to be supplied, that it was, you know,
It's not a requirement that the.
Advocate shall have the burden of proof in establishing.
Right, but, but impact on property values is not one of the criteria that's listed in our regulation.
Yeah, but it's, this is not an all inclusive list.
No, it's just one of the things, but a study was presented that showed that property values in Ohio 20 years ago next to a 250-acre gravel mine reduced property values. That was presented to us as, as telling the board that, look, it's going to impact our, negatively impact our property values. What we're saying in this resolution is that those apples and oranges.
But can't the planning board use its own discretion to say that if this such and such thing happens, then it's going to obviously adversely impact property values? Do you have to have a study to show it?
If, if, you could, you could reach that conclusion, but if it's not based on adequate evidence, then Mr. Folito could take the town to court and, and challenge that conclusion based on it was reached with no evidence, no adequate evidence.
So, if I made a study that was referred to here for this Professor Diane Height, I looked up on Google Earth and you could see a great big mine just north of Columbus, adjacent to a 30,000 population city, so to me, that was much different than this mine out in the forest.
Yeah, I'm, I'm saying it is different, but it doesn't mean that the conclusion isn't still valid, even though this study didn't support it.
I think what he's saying, though, is this, this study was presented as.
The board, the board considered the study.
Considered the study and said that it was comparing apples to oranges, basically.
But what we're saying is that this study was not valid.
Right.
Well, not that it wasn't valid, but that it's, it's, it's different in size, scope.
Right, it's not.
I mean, if some of the board looked at it, it's up to the board to determine that. You looked at it, you considered it, but it's different from what we're talking about here, and, and there's no evidence that's been presented, you know, of, the way that it's phrased, of a, of a project of similar size, scope, and duration in this location in this market that would show that the property values would be negatively impacted, so. If we, if we conclude that they're going to be negatively impacted, that's fine, you know, you're obviously free to do that, but you would, it could be challenged if the permit's denied, Mr. Folito could challenge that based on the fact that it was reached, the conclusion was reached with no adequate evidence to support it.
Okay, onward. Mr. Folito must pledge a mining reclamation bond to protect, preserve, and restore the parcel to its natural site after the completion of the project.
For state.
Oh, state, sorry. The DEC remains responsible to ensure restoration of the parcel and that the reclamation bond remains in place until the DEC verifies that the parcel has been restored pursuant to the approved plan. The approval, the approved plan, I'm getting tired, includes seeding and establishment of a vegetated cover. Therefore, upon the completion of the reclamation process, what now is and looks like an abandoned and old mining operation will be a visually pleasing natural site. The restoration of the site to a visually pleasing natural site goes to the improvement of not only this parcel on which the project is located, but substantially improves the property in the immediate vicinity of the project. Land use Article 10-4A2, suitable for the proper. Suitable for the property in question and designed, instructed, operated, and maintained so as to be in harmony with and appropriate in appearance with the existing or intended character of the general law. Finding, the intent of the Sterling land use regulation is to allow traditional land uses to support the character of the community. With a special use permit and evaluation of each individual case allows the town to satisfy the objectives of the land use regulation. The planning board has diligently reviewed every aspect and detail of the subject project and has considered all of the details and concerns provided by the town residents during public hearings and in written communications. The general concern of the planning board has been to determine whether the proposed project could proceed without an adverse impact to the environment and surrounding properties. Implementing conditions to control visual and noise impacts with screening and buffering vegetation enforcement of a thousand-foot setback regulation between structures and mining activities is one such example. Others examples of these conditions are as follows. Number one, dust abatement through watering surfaces, paved polished roadway, trees and earth berm for filtering, and tarp-covered loads exiting the project. Secondly, soil erosion and surface water contamination mitigated through application of stormwater prevention, pollution prevention, and construction of a seven-foot berm, earth berm, to eliminate possibility of sedimentation to nearby Sterling Creek along with phasing of the mining operation while implementing reclamation techniques to the land. Oh, could I stop you there for a second? Yes, ma'am. And in the first line, soil erosion through application of the SWIP, the SWIP, there's a P missing.
Oh, it should be triple P, right?
Yeah.
Yep, there you go, nice finish.
Big deal, you didn't get that one?
No, I missed that. I only read through this one.
Okay, sorry, Jim. There, groundwater contamination in residential wells, Sterling Creek and adjacent wetlands have been determined not to be an issue by the DEC by stipulating excavation to remain at a minimum of five feet above seasonal high ground elevation to be determined yearly in the spring as well as the absence of chemicals, waste, refuse, and petroleum from being stored on site. Yeah, but I have one more, I have a question there. Did you, after the phasing, you know, Phase 1, Phase 2, whatever, and then you're supposed to reclaim it? Do you reclaim it after every phase or when? Yes, every phase, like once you've done with the 1 and 1A?
You can, but before you go to the next phase, you have to purchase another bond. So that phase is protected.
Okay, does that answer my question then? Because I didn't know if it was, if you were, once you got done with one section, if you would reclaim it and then you'd go on to the next one? Could you use that bond for the next one?
You can.
If you've done, okay?
Or you can leave that one open and not reclaim it, move on to the next one, get another bond.
So how is this particular, how are you set up to do this? What's the understanding?
Right now, I have one bond for the first phase.
Okay.
So when I complete that, then I decide if I reclaim that right away or get another bond for Phase 2.
So you decide whether you're going to?
Yeah, because you still have the bond on the first phase, so it's still protected.
Okay.
If you reclaim that, you could transfer the bond to the second phase, though?
Yeah, I mean, always it's the same exact side, because that's what the bond is based upon.
Because they just want to assure that you're going to reclaim it.
DEC comes in and assesses what the value is to reclaim it, and that's what your bond is based upon.
Because I guess I, I don't know how legally to write that in there or if it would be a condition. I would think that that would be the way to go is to, once you do one phase, then you get that back to looking good before you go on to the next one. I don't know, I'm not having, I'm not in the business, I don't know what would be involved with that.
Well, yeah, but in my perspective, I might need that area for storing material if it's processed.
All right, see, that answers my question.
The DEC won't allow me to go to Phase 2 until I have a bonded one.
Oh, okay.
I can't touch that parcel until the bond is in place.
And the bond is... Just add a text, six, okay. That you will prove that it will get done.
It's a de-permit, it's a, that's, that's what it is.
Okay. Analysis by the planning board of the overall area acknowledges that the zoning district adjacent to the subject property is a hamlet, which does not allow mining and therefore does not allow traffic generated from a mining operation to pass through it. As such, the planning board has demanded from the initial review that all traffic must travel south as a deliberate action to uphold the character of the general laws of the town and be in accordance with a comprehensive plan. The planning board must bear in mind the rights of all property owners to utilize a parcel of land for buildings or any other purpose allowed by the land use regulation and from that basis determine the suitability of the proposed use of the subject property. The planning board has reviewed and considered the DEC's negative declaration and the evaluation of the soil profile for the subject property, which describes the composition of the soils to have substantial substratum layer of stratified sand and gravel making the property ideal for the proposed purpose. Land use regulation article 10-4A3. In conformance with all applicable requirements of these regulations, the finding has set forth a detailed herein through regular planning board meetings, work sessions, public hearings, a review of the project by all state, federal, and local agencies with jurisdiction over the project, an independent traffic study by Creighton Manning, and emails and comments from neighbors and residents during a more than a two-year period, the planning board has done due diligence in its review of the project and found it to be in compliance with the land use regulations, the town's comprehensive plan, and all applicable laws and regulations. Land use regulation article 10-4A4. Suitable in terms of effects on street or highway traffic and safety with adequate access arrangements to protect major streets from undue congestion and hazard. Finding, the planning board hired Creighton Manning engineers to perform a traffic study to determine if the proposed site is served by an adequate highway transportation network, suitable to carry the traffic generated by the mining operation. Creighton Manning's conclusions support the adoption of the project in that Sanford Road is designated as a low-volume road that's expected not to change even after the mining project is complete. Intersections at Sanford Road, Hopeful Road, State Routes 38 and 104 were chosen for the study because they are anticipated to be key intersections that hauling trucks will travel. The review of traffic volumes revealed that a noticeable increase occurs in the PM hours of operation, but that the increase itself is not significant from a roadway capacity perspective, although the presence of trucks would be more prominent at those times for neighboring residents. The volume would be further controlled by maximum allowed trucks per hour designated by the highway supervisor in accordance with the road preservation law. The engineers' review of accident data yield no discernible accident types or trends for the area and recommended that centerline striping of the Sanford Road could mitigate neighbor concerns, which the town is willing to do. The stopgap analysis revealed that the average number of gaps is more than sufficient to accommodate the projected traffic volumes from the site. The site distance evaluation found several areas, although not critically limited, were below AASHTO site distance guideline standards because of accumulated brush at most of the intersections. Removal trees and vegetation by the applicant, towns of Sterling and Victory Highway Departments, Kiuga County Highway, and the State DOT would mitigate this condition and improve all site distances to be within AASHTO guidelines. The vertical curves on State Route 104 and Hopeful Road adds the site distance deficiencies, but intersection warning signs and advisory speed limits already implemented are sufficient. Kiuga County Highway and the town of Sterling have already begun efforts to reduce speed limits on Hopeful Road and Sanford Road as recommended by Creighton Manning as well. The traffic designed by CJC dictated by the town planning board to mandate that trucks must travel to the south and not northbound on Sanford Road is to assist in safety measures for the residents of the area. Signs by CJC on site as well as road signs by the town of Sterling will also be implemented for safety of the traveling public. Roadlets of all roadways found to be accessible, acceptable for two-way traffic at and beyond the projected volumes for the project with road bonds for Sterling, Victory, and the County Highway. New York State CHIPS funding as well as road taxes paid by truck drivers should sufficiently cover any road degradation that may occur, which would alleviate any financial burden for the taxpayers of all the surrounding communities. Be it further resolved based on adequate evidence presented that the proposed use meets all of the general and specific requirements of the land use regulation, that the town of Sterling Planning Board hereby allows and grants CJC's application for a special use permit to operate a sand and gravel mine at 13181 Sanford Road, Markville, New York, tax map ID number 20.00-1-68.1 in specific accordance with the site plan approved herein and conditioned upon the following. Number one, CJC shall provide the town of Sterling with copies of any and all testing and/or inspection reports required by the DEC mining permit within 30 days of issuance and/or receipt. Two, the special use permit shall be subject to compliance at all times with all conditions and requirements of the DEC mining permit dated September 8th, 2015. Three, CJC shall install traffic control signage on the property adequate in number, size, and location. Four, CJC shall at all times keep and maintain the property free of brush that would otherwise impair site distances. Five, CJC shall at all times keep the portions of Sanford Road adjacent to the mine free of rocks, sand, and all other debris generated by mine activity. Six, a dust preventive layer shall be spread on traveled roadways at all operations where required to protect the public and the countryside against wind blown sand and dust in accordance with Land Use Regulation 10-5J2G. All loads shall be covered with no part of the load visible for dust control. Seven, there shall be a single access point for ingress and egress. All other access points to the property shall be gated and shall not be utilized. Eight, the single ingress/egress road shall be paved to help eliminate dust and tracking onto Sanford Road.
Can I have that clarified? What is meant by paved? Maybe you should ask the road superintendent that because some of the roads in town are not quote-unquote paved, they're soil and...
Soil and stone.
Soil and stone.
My question along the same, Brian, was how far in is it going to, would we want it paved? I mean, you know, you're talking four feet or six or what? See, that was...
It says paved to help eliminate dust and tracking. I think you would leave it as long as there's not a problem. You know what I mean? Because how do you put a distance on it? As long as it's adequate to control, but it's not bringing stuff out onto the main road.
From the life of mine boundaries?
What do you want to say, adequately paved? Or to pave to adequately eliminate dust and traffic or dust?
I just objected toward paved. Maybe say the single ingress/egress road shall be brought to town road specification
Brian, you got another word for paved?
No, well, if he'd have to go to the road guy and say, is this...
Yeah, I don't know. But we got to, we got to make the condition something that he can, something that he can, if the resolution's granted, it's got to be something that he can adhere to. We can't make it ambiguous, so...
Asphalt surface treatment, that's what Brian is saying.
Should be paved with asphalt surface treatment, sufficient to eliminate dust and tracking on the Sanford Road. And then, you know, if it's a code enforcement officer, maybe out there to make sure that it is.
Yeah, I like that better than paved.
Where did you plant it? I didn't plant the life of mine boundary.
You asked for me?
So what, what language are we going to, is the board going to use there? The rule should be, should be, what was the term?
Asphalt surface treated? What was it, Brian, sober? That, what was it?
Asphalt treatment.
Asphalt treatment.
Asphalt surface treatment. So there shall be asphalt surface treated, okay? Sufficient to eliminate, to eliminate dust and tracking on the Sanford Road.
From where, like from the, from the entrance access road to the life of mine? There's the map, yeah. And about how, about how far is that?
It has to be at least a truck length, I mean, so you got it.
Yeah, so then the map, it comes around like this, and then there's the life of mine and then area. So the whole, is that whole? Is that whole one, the access? I know, that's why, yeah. So our question is...
What would you think, Brian? Some days 30 feet would be enough, some days a mile wouldn't be enough, I know.
How about 200 feet? That brings in around this curve on your map there. So you would have to get stone and oil or whatever you call it to do that first 200 feet. And that would keep the dust down, right? You're not going to generate dust when you got it treated with oil. Now, you might get dust from the name of mine.
Yeah, I mean, there's going to be days where you're going to use a water truck for dust. I mean, that's, you know...
I would suggest going 200 feet, I mean, that would answer for...
That's up to, that's up to the board with, I guess, input from our highway super to determine that.
It's not in the highway or anyway, so I'm not, that's your guys' thing.
It's up to, I guess, the planning board's on it, so... That's a condition that you want to impose, you got to, you got to make it kind of pretty specific.
Yeah, I think you should put a measurement, otherwise it's hard to...
Yeah.
200 feet, if that would cover that distance.
Yeah, it looks like it will. I mean, that's a scale there. 200 feet's about half of that.
Is that the, is that edge there, is that considered the life mine?
Since access to the...
Right to there, the blue curve comes around that.
Do you want to just say to berm?
The berm's way out here somewhere.
No, it's that blue.
The blind.
Yeah.
Do you think that would be sufficient?
200 feet?
I think sober tell, yeah.
Yeah, because we do have to give him some parameters. So how do you know that's around the current...
Well, I don't know, but the scale here...
Yeah.
400, it looks like that's about half a full hundred if it's doing...
See, I, I think the way it reads, though, if it, the single ingress/egress road shall be paved or if you change it to treated, to help eliminate dust and tracking onto Sanford Road. I think if you leave that to his discretion and then to the code enforcement, if there's an issue with stuff being tracked out onto the road, then address it from there.
We want the stuff to water.
Because he's going to be treating the gravel, you know, to dry away with water to keep the dust down.
But to the attorney's point, it really does, if we said a specific amount...
Could you read it into that if you're...
Then again, if we say 20 feet or 50, if it's arbitrary. If you say sufficient to eliminate dust and tracking onto the road, then it's, then we've said all we need to say, he's got to comply with it. If you go out there... You go out there...
Okay.
Not have stuff in the road.
Right.
If you come down there and stuff in the road, you have the right to pull the permit.
Yeah.
So I have to do, I gotta do everything out of the road.
But if we say two hundred feet, on the other hand, and then there's a prob, he can leave it, if there's a problem with stuff on the road, he can say, well, I've got my two hundred feet. I've done what you said.
Shall be paved per minimum of two hundred feet to help eliminate dust. So at least you've got your satisfied, Brian, since you've got the specific thing you can measure, and then to eliminate dust and track.
And if you put in a specific number, then there's no argument.
Yeah, it's a little easier to...
So I would recommend that we change it to the reading there extending two hundred feet into...
Except, except what if, what if two hundred feet doesn't eliminate the dust, you know?
Say at least two hundred feet in order to eliminate dust and track.
How would you would this, I mean...
Well, the water's gonna eliminate the dust. What the pavement's gonna do is give you a place where you drive, if you drive out of a field or out of your muddy driveway onto the road, you throw, the stuff comes off your tires. That's what the pavement's gonna eliminate is, you know, driving through the mud or muddy situation, tracking that stuff where it's gonna leave it in the road. Or if you put in, that's why I think, you know, thirty or fifty feet would be plenty, that when he drives across that, that's, you know, him treating it with water, going over it with a water truck, that's gonna keep the dust down, which that's already been addressed.
So... Estimating, what's the, what's the width of this rule about?
Who do you estimate?
Fifty feet.
Fifty? Well, I guess I...
I would go along with Brian to have it covered, up in that curve there, it would be more, have to get more of the dirt off.
The board's gonna make the decision on it.
I, I'd just say a minimum, do you want it? That way, if there's still a problem, according to code enforcement officer, he could say, you gotta go there because you're, you gotta go beyond the two hundred. Said we could make it beyond the two hundred, it said minimum, I'd say two hundred and ten. Or some other...
Oh.
What do you think?
I think it needs to say the way it is. And not, not be specific. Because he is going to be using the water. And it, it already says that some of it has to be paved, a section of it has to be paved. And I can see your point.
Because that's all that's gonna collect is what? I mean, you're gonna have, I assume, a tractor with a broom or something on it where you can keep the road clean. You gotta keep the road clean or you're gonna have problems with Brian, you're gonna have problems with everybody, so...
And it says paved with whatever that is.
That's why all the farmers are going around putting big gravel pads in so they can get their trucks off the road so they're not driving, you know, like pulling out the road with a combine and, you know. You know, I think as long as it reads where...
It says...
Because the problem we wanna keep is to keep the stuff off the road, keep the dust down. And the water, you could have that a mile long and the trucks drive over it, you're still gonna get dust because of, the dirt's gonna sit on top of the asphalt, and then when you drive over it, if you don't wet it down, you're still gonna have dust, you know.
So we're okay with, that's a good point, too.
Yeah.
The longer it is, might be the worse, the worse it is.
Because you put, you put water on dirt on pavement, you're making mud. You put water on dirt on a driveway, you keep the dust down.
So the road shall be paved with whatever, that's okay?
I think, I don't like the word paved.
Well, we can use the...
We, I think we read asphalt.
Asphalt surface.
Yeah, we do asphalt surface treatment.
And sufficient, sufficient after that?
We have asphalt surface treated.
Sufficient to help eliminate dust?
Sufficient to eliminate, to eliminate. We give it a half if you wanna say, you know, asphalt surface treated sufficient to eliminate dust and tracking on the Sanford Road.
How do you determine if there's been dust and dirt trapped on the Sanford Road? Who's gonna make the decision?
Oh, the drivers that go back. Anybody will, will say that there's not, oh, they'll hear from the town here. Believe me, the town here.
How do they know that it's, that it's gonna be corrected?
Just look at the road.
Well, they can, they can make a complaint to the town, they can make a complaint to the sheriff's department or whoever.
Check it. They will say, gotta keep it cleaned up. We're hearing from the people. And, and then if that doesn't, however far you go in, if it, if you get complaints every week and you have people there, you're gonna say, geez, I better go in a little bit longer while this is coming from some. I would guess because, whatever, but the town, they'll hear. So is that okay? Are we all set on that one?
Uh-huh. Thanks, I'll be sure.
Okay.
Still have to mention...
Number nine, existing conifer trees along Sanford Road to be maintained and replanted if necessary as they are an element of the visual screening and noise for brief plan. Number ten, mining operations will be undertaken only in phases one A, one B, two, and a small portion of three and four successively with reclamation bonds. Number eleven, prior to any mining operations at the property, CJC shall provide the Town of Sterling with the following: Town of Victory Highway bond, Cuba County Highway bond, reclamation bond from the DEC permit, and the Sterling Road Preservation Law bond. Number twelve, CJC shall mark the thousand-foot boundary mark between mining operations and any surrounding structures now owned by CJC pursuant to Land Use Regulation Article 10-5J2G with flags to enable CJC personnel as well as town and state officials to easily locate it.
Should have maybe the one thousand foot boundary line, shall mark the line between the mining operations.
Makes sense, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
So you're putting a boundary line, Mark?
I'll just cross out Mark.
Number thirteen, CJC shall be...
So how is that line gonna be marked?
With flags. Do you have to say how far the flags have to be?
Yeah, because otherwise you could have one here, you could have one here. I mean, how, how, I don't know. How, how do you define that?
Well, we say with flags to enable personnel to easily locate it, so again, you know, flags, sufficient flags to enable personnel, they gotta be able to locate it.
Yes.
If you go out there and it's not, you can't locate it, then you gotta put more flags down. Because it's some discretion to determine that, rather than just arbitrarily saying you gotta have, you know, a hundred flags, flags every, you know. If you just say sufficient to enable somebody to identify, I think that's, I think that's okay.
Okay.
With the life of mine boundary, since, since by looking at the map, it's obviously way outside of the thousand foot mark, is that suitable? Because that needs to be marked out for DEC, so when they come out, they know where that line is.
Okay.
And know that I can't cross it. It's, when you look at that map and that arc, it doesn't come close other than, you know, that one corner. And I'm just asking, I mean, either way, I'll do whatever you tell me to do, but is that suitable? Seeing how that's outside of...
Because that, between these places?
It's to the east.
Between the last mine.
So would you take...
Well, here's, here's the line for phase one and two. I can only mine in here anyways. Here's the thousand foot mark.
Okay.
So this has gotta be, first thing that's gonna get flagged is this right here.
Okay.
Okay. Obviously, it's the only spot that the thousand foot is gonna be right here, which is gonna be flagged anyways, that's life of mine. Do you want all this area to be flagged here? I guess is my question? If this is flagged, for, like I said, for the DEC...
So I would say before you mine it, it must be flagged.
Before I mine over here or before?
On each phase you took, if you go by phase two.
Yeah, like, I'm only approved to phase, to mine phase one and phase two.
Right.
The thousand foot doesn't touch phase one and phase two.
Okay.
That's my question.
Oh, I see.
So do you want all this flagged in here? Seeing how I can't go there anyways?
Operations in any surround...
If this is flagged, I guess is what I mean, you know it's outside the thousand foot mark.
Right, okay.
It's just a question, either way.
Well, it's, it says mining operations, and you're only okay to do mining operations in those phases.
Correct.
So...
I mean, if...
If the thousand feet doesn't come within the mining operation, then you shouldn't have to flag it.
If it's not close to the mining operation, I don't know why I would flag all this.
Yeah.
Until you're out that far.
Yeah.
Right, so is this verbiage okay to cover between mining operations and any surrounding structures? That's okay then, is right?
Yeah, I think, yeah. If I was him, I could say, well, I'm not mining over here.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I don't need to flag it.
Right.
Okay.
Yep.
CJC shall be allowed a maximum of fifty trucks per day to access the property for mining operations.
Where does that come from?
That actually comes from the seeker. You actually put that on the seeker, I actually looked that up.
I thought it was ten per hour or something like...
Well, in, in the narrative, I mean, that was like the maximum. But in the seeker report, you actually had that, so that was where that came from.
Right. So you could have forty trucks the first hour, and ton trucks the remainder of the day. Okay? Fine. It didn't work, eh? I remember the ten per hour, that's what I...
Yeah.
I think that was just something they got throughout there, the average or...
Max.
Yeah.
Number fourteen, CJC shall at all times be in compliance with all requirements and provisions of the Town of Sterling Road Preservation Local Law. Number fifteen, mining operations shall be limited to the following hours, Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. for residential deliveries only. No mining operations will be conducted on Sundays or legally declared holidays.
Well, is the for residential deliveries just apply to Saturday?
Yeah.
That's the way it's written, yeah.
That's in our land use regulations.
That's right out of the land use regs.
Well, the cookies understood that all of the times that they're mining is just for residential deliveries.
Should be the following hours, colon, Monday through Friday, seven to five, semicolon, and Saturday, eight to four, for as opposed to the results.
To the semicolon, eliminate that comma there after PM.
After PM?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's okay. Number sixteen, a structural barrier shall be provided to secure the site to achieve public safety in accordance with Land Use Regulation Article 10-5J2E. Number seventeen, pursuant to Land Use Regulations Article 10-5J2H, the town shall conduct an annual review of the site reclamation plan to confirm implementation of the plan as each section is mined and ensures reclamation requirements are followed as specified in the mined land reclamation permits issued by the DEC. Number eighteen, CJC shall at all times be in compliance with the area variance granted by the Town of Sterling ZVA under Land Use Regulation Article 10-5J2D on April 27, 2015, filed with the town clerk on May 4th and 5th, 2015, and after a rehearing on September 24, 2015, and filed with the town clerk on September 28, 2015. Number nineteen, CJC shall comply with the recommendations contained in Creighton Manning's November 1, 2016 traffic study at conclusions items 3A, 3B, and 3C regarding improving site distances. Be it further resolved that the applicant shall comply in all respects with all laws and regulations, and specifically the Town of Sterling Land Use Regulations, and be it further resolved that the Town of Sterling's code enforcement officer is hereby authorized and directed upon payment of any required fees to issue such permits and certificates or to take other such action as may be required to effectuate and enforce this resolution, and shall be responsible for inspection and enforcement of the site plan and special use permit conditions and requirements. And be it further resolved that this resolution shall be effective as of the date of this filing with the town clerk and shall be subject to annual inspection for compliance.
Yeah, I thought there was also something in here about the monitoring of the wells and the water. Weren't we gonna require that?
Number one, Susan, is it provide the town with copies of any and all testing and/or inspection reports? Would that be it?
But weren't we gonna require testing, annual testing of the wells and the, and surrounding, well, surrounding property and surrounding water?
It's required by the DEC, so...
The DEC requires that, so it'd be redundant.
Every day you get a deal.
Did they have annual?
I have to do it annually. That's the DEC, that would stretch to you all.
Can I just go ahead and say something? Yeah, I just have a question for that. That includes testing Australian Creek and testing the...
The creek?
No, it just includes that I say mine even above the water table.
Oh, that.
Is what that's for.
But I thought we were gonna also to ensure safety of the environment and the neighbors, that we were gonna do something about testing the wells and testing the water, the creek water, just to...
What else, like neighboring holes?
Yeah.
Because I think, are you referring to that right there? That was one of our findings. I think that's what maybe you're talking about.
Hey, you know, it's written, it's, it's how it works.
What testing does DEC require regarding water wells?
You're asking the wrong person. I don't know what they require for water at all. I don't, I'm, I'm not digging. Alls I'm doing is next to five feet above water to water table.
Yeah, but that's different than wells.
Because I'm not digging any wells or anything.
So the DEC says nothing about adjacent wells?
They already done their study, and they said that, I'm not even getting in the water table, so they've already concluded that it's not gonna affect wells.
But it's something we could put in the conditions that that testing is good to protect the, protect the neighbor's wells and the, and the creek, because they're natural resources we wanna protect.
And, and how would we do that?
I don't know.
I mean, how, if we tested it, how would we know where, if it was contaminated?
Where it was coming from.
It's coming from this place or somebody else.
Best time of the year.
You get on every thing, and draw the water out and the cost of it, I mean, you'd have to, it's a whole big conundrum there. I understand where you're coming from, I understand, but I don't know.
On the DEC's inspection, they're gonna make sure that there's no water runoff and everything's contained, and it's not...
If he's lower than five feet above the water, then he, then he gets shut down.
I think DEC said to themselves, by specifying the five feet, that that was going to cover any potential deterioration of adjacent wells.
Okay.
Okay. So that's why they said the five feet was to prevent.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Be it further resolved that this resolution shall be effective as of the date of its filing with the town clerk, and shall be subject to annual inspection for compliance. Do you do that next part?
No, no.
There's gotta be a motion.
Somebody's gonna make a motion to pass the resolution, or, you know, as written.
Can we have discussion now or after the motion's made?
Uh, you guys can, you're free to discuss what you need to discuss.
And what is the annual inspection, what, what are we inspecting annually for the project?
First of all, to make sure that the reclamation. Is being done according to the, to the requirement.
The resolution shall be, it looks like it's saying that this resolution shall be subject to annual inspection for compliance. Is that meaning that? Or, or the thing, project?
Yeah.
Subject to.
Permit. The permit shall be subject.
No, it's the reclamation. It's subject to annual.
Is the permit subject to annual inspection anyway?
Not by us, the permit's issued by the DEC.
Maybe the operation shall be subject to. I think she's right, we're not inspecting the resolution, we're inspecting the operation, the mining operation.
How about your conditions?
That's part of the resolution.
It shall be subject to annual inspection.
If you wanna take that, you can take it out.
Letter H of our, um, special use permit for sand and grab operation, says annual review of the site reclamation plan to confirm implementation of the plan. As each section is mined and ensures reclamation requirements are followed as specified. So, right, is that what?
That's part, that's part already of it, you're saying? Annual inspection's already part of it?
I would suggest we always say town clerk, amen. The mining operation itself shall be subject to annual inspection.
It's, you could say that, or you could just take that out, you could just say it should be effective as of the date of filing with the clerk, and just take the rest out.
Cause we have inspections.
I have an annual operating inspection now.
I think it's in. Cause it's in there somewhere.
Yeah. That's just the reclamation that's there, but if you want to have, I think the, the whole thing, compliant with the conditions or whatever.
Just to ensure that it's in this resolution, yeah. So, there's a way to say it, I guess, it hurts, there's a different way to say it, uh, that's better. The resolution should be effective as of the date of filing with the clerk, and the requirements set forth herein should be subject to annual inspection or something to that effect.
Inspection and compliance, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Get that, Lisa?
Yeah. Did you?
Well, he's got it.
Any other discussions?
Well, just before you go, I, I'd like to say that, you know, this, one of the reasons this country's been so successful is its natural resources. And whether it's forests, oil, natural gas, or mines, or anything else, we have made use of all those God-given natural resources. And to me, this is, you know, miniscule, uh, extent of act. Just doing what the whole country's been doing for, for years. And I think we have listened to all of the input, and we have addressed a number of conditions here. That, in my opinion, should very well control the operation this mine the way it should be controlled. That's just my feeling.
Well, I agree with that, and I think the, um, just the idea of how much, two years we've read and reread and considered and thought about. Any of these subjects that have been brought up, but one thing is a positive is that we know there will be oversight. Without land use regulations, which I know is not a dirty word or something, that gives you, um, the ability to oversee things. And to have rules to go by. And what we've done is add to that with our, the exhaustive conditions. So I like the idea of the oversight of this whole process. I'm okay with that.
I think the important thing that we need to decide is if this is in the best interest of the town, that's what we're charged with, looking at, is this in the best interest of the town? And, um, I've been asking, what are the advantages? And the main thing is that we're gonna get cheaper gravel. And. Yeah, I don't know how much cheaper, cause there are gravel beds that are nearby, uh, in Fort Ee and Sodas, whatever. Um, so I'm not sure that it's financially gonna make that much of a difference, but I think that even from a financial perspective, that is, um, balanced out by the loss in tax revenue that we're going to see. Um, because the property itself will be decreasing in value as the gravel goes out, the neighboring value, property values will be decreasing in value. Um, and so we'll probably get less tax revenue, and more wear and tear on the roads. And so I think even from a financial perspective, it's not really in the best interest of the town. I think the negatives that we've seen brought up by various neighbors, um, seeing that if you look at the townspeople, there's gonna be more people hurt by it than I think helped by it. I think a gravel operation, in just taking out a little bit of gravel at a time, probably nobody would have objected to, and that might be an advantage to the town, if you get some, some gravel, um, easily, et cetera. But, at the rate at which it's proposed, I think the issues to the neighbors in terms of quality of life, dealing with the noise, the dust, the safety issues, um, is going to be. Definitely an adverse impact to their, not only their property values, but their quality of life, and making to live in this rural town. And the people who buy it is gonna be gone, can't sit out the backyard anymore and. So, and you know, it seems like the overall, when you look at, you know, the pros and cons, which is what we've gotta do, is it in the best interest of the town? I think it's, I, I don't see it, I don't see that it's been shown to be in the best interest of the town. That, uh, the increased truck traffic, the, um. Safety hazard. Et cetera, I think I've said it off, I also think it's gonna have an impact, adverse impact on tourism if we get a lot more trucks on the road. It's another side effect, which is all the things we're trying to involve ourselves. I don't think it's the kind of industry that, in the place it's proposed, is in the best of the town.
Anybody else? Does someone please make a motion?
I also wanna bring up something, I, I emailed you, Julie, and I didn't really hear back, but Scott, I mentioned, you did mention you, you own a gravel, you own a gravel bed.
Well, there's a gravel bed on my property, but I don't, I don't.
I just wondered, in the interest of not showing any conflict of interest, whether it might be gonna hit you or future something about?
I've already spoken with everybody and I don't, I mean, I think, and I'm not looking to work it as a gravel mine or. I don't see any conflict interest or anything. I don't, it doesn't swing my vote one way or another.
You don't have a gravel mine, it has a permit, you've got the DEC and everything, so it's not a business.
No, it's not a business.
I make a motion that we include this resolution as presented.
I'll second it.
I do a real couple. Yes. Sure, yes.
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Great, it's proved, right? Clear that the resolution's been adopted. We have a super majority vote which was required by Cuba County, so we met that requirement. Thank you, Scott. Oh, I'll, I'll make a motion, Julie.
Yes.
A second.